Quiet.
Need to twist it more?
No, no. We've got a work session for the March 22nd, City of Warren, City Council Board, and this man. Is that better? All right. Here are the meeting agenda items. We have the minutes for March 8th, the regular meeting minutes, and the minutes for the March 8th work session minutes. Do we have any issues or concerns?
The work sessions and meetings are not forwarded to us.
I think we've got those out. Did they just come out?
I just looked at them.
Does everybody have them?
You can have a hard copy and email.
Can you get a spare copy? And the presentations from all police departments or the Association of Police Chiefs, we'll pick that up once Representative starts. We've got swearing in, and actually two members, Mr. Winn and Mr. Kirk. George Power is in at 45,000. The City Council has already approved that, but as we had some discussions with the city attorney, we're just going to actually read those in the record, so that I mean specific property, because at least two parts of it, discussions with the city did not follow. And questions related to George Power's issues. Public Works. Quick sentence. We talked about that one now. Will we vote on it? Joseph, again.
I have a quick little PowerPoint I want to give to you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. All right, I want to talk to you a little about fleet maintenance. I believe you have a copy of the PowerPoint and the presentation. Now I've got it on the screen for you. First slide is just describing what fleet maintenance is and how it's going to be vital for the city. Right now, everything we have that needs to be repaired, we're having to send off to a secondary vendor. A lot of times, we're not getting the items back for weeks at a time. As you know, we can't really afford downline, especially in public works with weed eaters, blowers, smaller equipment like that, some are not coming in. Police and fire are the same way. They can't afford for their vehicles to be down for numerous weeks at a time when you don't have repairs to get them. Following the slide is going to show a scope of the dangers, a list of what complete maintenance would cover. The repair and maintenance of vehicles and equipment for the city. We have a work order system, safeguarding of assets, and performance tracking. Repair and maintenance, I did a breakdown, which considered repair was considered maintenance. You've got two different sections of repair. You've got a partial failure, you've got a complete failure. The complete failure is when the equipment is totally down, can't be used. The partial failure, well, actually, you can use it, but it'd have to be repaired soon before further damages on that, on that equipment. Maintenance, more of a preventative measure, oil changes, inspections, upgrading the existing assets that we have now to where they can perform better in the future, and then performing the necessary repairs before more costly repairs actually happen on any equipment. We'd be putting in place a new work order system. Just a key track of anything we do to vehicles or equipment, which actually comes in really handy. You have an instance where you have to show somebody yourself a vehicle, you have all those work orders onsite where you can pull them and show what's been done, when it's been done, and how much it costs. Next one can be safeguarding of assets. I put a small definition there. It's just a resume assurance that we're preventing any equipment being sold or taken out of service that doesn't need to be taken out of service. We keep up with that inventory list as well. Performance tracking, that would help on the fleet maintenance side of it for the fleet, for the public works trucks, police vehicles, fire vehicles, to know how much money we're spending on each individual vehicle. That way, it's not costing us more than the vehicle's actually worth to maintain it. Couple pieces of equipment that we're going to need for the fleet maintenance, staff is going to be a mechanic. I've also put a mechanic's job description in that packet that I turned to you. Couple other pieces of equipment are going to be mostly the tools that the mechanic's going to need to do the job, two post lifts, tire machine, balancer, air compressor, the bulk oil tanks to do the oil changes, a scanner to read the codes on the cars or equipment, and then just the required safety devices. The following slide shows you some of the services that would actually take place under that job description, which is pretty much anything a mechanic would be taking care of without having to send it off to the dealership unless it's under warranty. We'd be able to do engine replacements, transmission replacements, you know, cooling system problems, fuel problems. It would really cut down on the downtime that these vehicles are out of service. I can tell you that when I came in, I asked for an inventory list, and I got it. And I asked, I said, "Where are these two blowers?" And he said, "They're in the shop." They've been there for three weeks. With summertime here, that's not possible. We can't afford for equipment to be down for three weeks at a time. So bringing those services in-house of the fleet maintenance would save money and time for each department in the city. It'd also save money on the vehicles, on the services themselves. I did some research on cost analysis for mechanics, and it's anywhere from $100 to $150 per hour that they're billing out. So it would definitely save all the way around the city with parts and labor. In that packet, I also put a current vehicle list of the fleet department, public works, as well as the equipment. Also put a sample of a motor vehicle checklist in there, as well as a vehicle maintenance request form, and three quotes, and also put in some information about each tool that's on those quotes. That way, you can kind of figure out yourself what those engines were whenever you look at.
Any questions? Anything ask for? Comments? This man?
So currently, what's the tracking system for parts management, work orders, and performance tracking? Like, no?
No.
No software?
No software, no.
No, nothing. Belt spray sheets and pieces of paper?
Not one of them.
Okay.
Especially in public works, I don't know if it does like that. They just take a piece of equipment, have it serviced, pay the invoice, they don't keep up with it right now, so we don't know what's been fixed, what's not. So I would like it done under control where we know what we're servicing, when we're servicing, and how much it costs.
And so with the addition of a fleet mechanic, do you, are you forecasting or foreseeing that, you know, we do need a system in place to make all the, make all moving parts work? I know you had mentioned about maintenance using the, being locked out from gas. Any other thoughts or opinions going to pass?
The best thing to do when a car needs servicing, you know, they'll leave this vehicle motor, this checklist every day. Ninety percent of the cars I've been out have a light on there that's changed before. And they would, it would have a lock on here, is that light on? They would say, "Yes." They would turn this in to their supervisor every day, all the time. Then they would make an appointment, or just bring it to the shop to have that vehicle serviced. You know, the parts will be there, oil change will take 10, 15 minutes, right now it's probably an hour, two hours if you have to take it to get it done.
So I guess anticipating a few growing pains as we kind of bring things up to speed where they need to be, just think about, you know, your tracking system of all the moving parts, and are you going to make it efficient? You know, it'll be one mechanic, but maybe with a couple people who have a little bit of knowledge, but that one resource has to be managed so that, you know, we don't have internally a backbone driving the productivity.
Man, I've been in the past with this, this vehicle maintenance request form to keep up with what we have. I put each vehicle would have its own file. That way, if a situation arose where we had to go in there and pull the files immediately, we got papers copied there, or we could actually put them on a Excel spreadsheet and have it all filed where everybody can see it all under.
Yeah, it'll be helpful to think of an electronic solution as you're ramping up and managing, bringing a program like that on.
This one? This train.
We used to have a, an employee who did all the man, vehicle maintenance, equipment maintenance in-house.
Yes, ma'am.
And he was no longer with the city, so would us buying all the equipment, do we have a person to replace, somebody to be able to use all the equipment that we, we just have?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Paul?
So we are, we're going to, you're going to have a device that can read all the codes and stuff for the, this cars and stuff?
Yes. We definitely have our own downtime.
Yeah.
I spoke with the public department earlier, they've got a couple parts already that we can be going, we can be those taking care of. So I mean, it's definitely going to be a busy job for a mechanic.
When you first interviewed, how you mentioned about a program that could keep them, to kind of obligate them to bring it in for routine maintenance or whatever?
Yes.
That should keep your vehicle lifespan long.
It should. And I mean, we can also work out a program where, you know, you increase mileage and you get your fuel.
Mm-hmm.
Whenever you're hitting that 3,000 miles, we could actually cut that fuel part off. That way, they have to come in and get their services done. We have to do it manually, but we could come up with a program.
Yeah, and I think I just, it's going to work. I mean, it's what's needed, but just thinking of getting things up to speed to where they, where you know they need to be, it's going to be some pain points.
There's going to be some growing pains in it, but we can move this process through smoothly. And I've got the, the one business that I got, only they can provide everything, they've got a real short lead time on getting the equipment, so we can definitely get a whole ball rolling pretty soon.
Ms. Steve?
Yeah, I just answered one of the questions about the equipment. Do you anticipate any delays in, you know, in parts and things, you know, with the situation that that's, that we're experiencing?
No, no. There's several different parts vendors we can use. You've got Advanced Auto Parts, you've got O'Reilly's, and you've got Napa's. So there's plenty to choose from. If one doesn't have it, we can call the next. And the good part about having fleet services in-house is we pay a commercial price on parts instead of paying the list price. So that commercial price goes for those three sellers.
So no, no shipping or anything like that problem? You know, due to road situations?
Every once in a while, you might have a part that's a one or two day delay, but you can push that car out, pull one in until that part gets there, that way you can keep it.
We've got some discussions about sanitation and sanitation employees.
I go into this evening. We were able to do a sanitation cost analysis, or at least comparison, since we have a public works manager now. This is further requested by council, so you can all have a copy of this in your packet. So we're taking into consideration the current contractor, Waste Pro hires contractors. The current charge that we have is $35.17 a month for resident. So just looking at the fact that in the contract, it also stipulates if we provide two sanit, two workers to the sanitation company, they'll drop that price to $23.11 per month to the residents. So looking at the two public works employees, the question is, is providing public works employees a feasible and beneficial approach to this problem? So if you look on your next page there, it will show you a graph where we've broken this down. Starting off with the cost, at the bottom, if you look, it shows you the cost, the employee cost in total. So the current cost per month is $42,204. No employee cost, so it's a static cost across the board there. On the monthly, if you look at the projected cost of $23.11 per employee, per resident, our cost would be $27,732 a month. The employee cost would be $8,580 a month, and the total cost would be $36,313 a month. So the next bar graph shows you the annual cost for this program. Currently as it is, we would expend $504,000, $504,000 per annum compared to if we hired the three employees. And I'm suggesting three employees because it offsets sick time, vacation time, and it also gives us an additional employee, and we'll see why that's beneficial here in just a second. The total cost per annum would be $332.784. The employee cost would be $102,960 for a total cost of $435.744. So as you go to the next slide, we'll show you how this is beneficial for us. Adding another employee and cost savings, more expense to the city without the employees. Three employees allow an extra public works employee. So as we're looking ahead on that, we actually see where we would have an additional employee that could be utilized by the public works department. And with the three employees, the city tomorrow would still realize the savings of over $70,000 per, on this program. So again, the box chart shows you the breakdown again. Without the employees, it's $506,448. The cost, incurred cost, just the sanitation, is $332.784 at the $23.11 price point. You drop down with the three public works employees, they would cost us $102,960 a month for a total cost of $435.744. So as you look at the final page there, break that out for you. For talks about the recommendation is to add the three public works employees, which is also in the packet. We lower the overall cost per month, per year rather, by $70,000, and it gives us more quality control in the public works department to, when we do trash pickup, and it also provides another sorely needed public works employee. Any questions on that?
This man?
No questions at this time.
Okay. This train.
Could I see the slide of the annual cost of two employees?
This one?
The previous one.
I'm sorry?
The previous one. So the annual cost of two employees, so here is...
This is actually for the three employees.
How much are we expecting to pay the new three employees?
To use three employees?
Yes.
That's the $102,000 number there. Look back, it's $102,960 per year for us, three employees.
What is the rate per hour for new mechanic?
You have that in your packet as well. That is, starting, the starting payment, I would suggest, is at page 24, I believe, which is $35.5 for the start payment. $35,500 per annum for the start payment.
Could we go back to the annual line, the annual slide?
This one?
What, $35,000? That cost us in the pool, the retirement, the insurance, and everything else? Is that correct?
It's her base pays, $35,500, so I'm figuring something.
Yeah, so the cost, I think the cost here is a little bit low to compare with the estimated of the three employees, because $35,000 a year, yourself or three employees, become one of five, that's not even included, other costs, insurance, retirement contributions. So if we go to the next slide, when we calculate...
Bob, can you pick that one?
Good, yeah. So the three? $435.44 is, should be bigger, and the 102,960 should be there. So there won't be a sale, but it wouldn't be $70,000, basically.
The, the, pay, I figured that, Bob, is the annual pay of $35,500. So if there is an extended cost that you're talking about, I think it would be for three employees over $70,000, it would still incur savings overall to the city.
Yeah, I, I see this saving to the city, but I'm now assuming they're set to house, that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
This one?
So the cost, the cost, we could say it was taken, but the cost charge is 35, I mean, they are charging us $35.17 a month.
That's correct.
Wow, okay. With, with the cost of whatever seven, you know, I, one or two, whatever, that the number is projected, that wasn't included, the benefit or that. I mean, with benefits and everything, it could go up a little bit more, but I'd like to see the cost breakdown, what cost the city to run with the three, you know, hybrid plan, breakdown to how much it costs for, random, how much, just, it's going to be like around $32, $33, something like that?
Uh, no, I don't know. Yeah, I remember, you could divide that number by...
Well, yeah, it doesn't matter, but, but I still, my point is, I don't got to get to that number, but my point is, with, I, I still like if we can keep the curside option open, because it's easy for everybody else. And this then, I, believe me, I live in the city of Warren, so I, come on, I live and work in the city of Warren, so I, I know the luxury, you know, been, not getting the backdoor service, but, and I have no problem either with whatever we choose to do, curside or backdoor, but again, I want to ask that whatever it is to pass along, because we're not trying to make any profit out of the residential trash service, so I, I'd like the city to pass it on. Put your cost out there and just do some kind of survey, see how much is it going to cost to get it serviced, you know, let's say $23 for curside and $35, $33, $34 for backdoor. So we have a, there's a survey or something that, see what people like to do and pick that. I, I mean, we, we shouldn't, we get in charge, it's going to cost a $32, $33 a household per month, and we should not bring that cost down to whatever it is and then make somebody else pay for that. That's, that's not fair at all. That's my point. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Steve?
No questions.
A couple of quick points. So when the, when the third employee is in the city, because the other two are on the sanitation section, and we're currently paying at least $16, $17 now, whatever it is, to George Works. Fair? Yeah, so if you're going to get into, you know, specific math, there would be at least some number, even if they weren't doing projects in the city, that would be related to sploths or would be hiring outside contractors, we could at least come up with a minimum number by, by running that capitalization and decide, like, $30, $40,000, you know, in terms of some number. If they're actually working on sploths, right, this, where we might add, hire an outside contractor, so that person might actually just have grass or whatever. But whoever's out there now might actually have a greater skill set and they can actually do the projects in the city. So there has to be some base number, you know, it certainly makes a, you know, any number that you're talking about, for insurance, so there are ways to reach those conclusions. This has to be an assumption, a minimal assumption, so there should be absolutely a minimum number, and then from there, you know, hopefully not, you know, the rates of our auto mechanics, probably not paying $100, $145 now to do some of those, but it's very hard. So that's just in that section. Other questions?
Just picking back on Council call coming earlier, we did have a survey for residential service, trash service last year. The survey, the participant was, I can, it scored less than 5%, so it doesn't reflect the city in a whole. And the time that we had advertised, we did not do a good job of pushing it hard to try to get people to be aware of that. It was, the survey only posted on the city website. We have other ways, social media to communicate with the residents, but we didn't use that. So it would not be that idea to push out the survey, to really listen to, to have, to let the residents have a chance to participate and tell us, the people who serve us, that's who are public servants, understand what they want.
Other comments?
Mayor Fleming, I do believe that we have had public surveys regarding sanitation. We've gone from A through Z many times regarding this sanitation issue. At some point, I think that to be able to have the service for all citizens and to justify the cost to have a clean city, in a city that everyone knows where their trash is supposed to go, and not using other businesses and trash receptacles, parks, and all of that, we need to settle sanitation discussion. We've had it the same thing over and over and over again, and I'm sure the citizens are saying, why don't we make a decision on sanitation, one and for all? Prices are going to change for services that are rendered right now, so we have to decide whether we're going to contract or we're going to be the service for that. And two options. I mean, it's not, at this point for me, not really difficult anymore, because we've done this for years and we still back F-1A, so we need to make a decision for the citizens and for the staff to not have to change programs, you know, every year, or when the contract expires, we need to resolve sanitation. We need to resolve sanitation. And that's my two cents.
So are you saying that we should put it in a pack here to, to make everybody?
That one solution? That, uh, we put out there and, uh, we have issues that, um, we need to resolve the majority of the issues that we have. And whatever, um, um, implementation works the best, that's the one we should go with. And I'm sure you do that in business, right? So this is business. I'm gonna plug it up. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Fleming and Julie, I believe that's first one.
This is good news.
What do you look like a orange plant? I know you've had, given to you.
Yeah.
Like, I have one here. Uh, US Properties Group is asking to subdivide the Goodwill property. Plant is owned or found that few changes need to be made to the plant. Those changes have been submitted on the preliminary plant, uh, it's now the final plant. Decision is, if you see anything else you think is, is the better property, utility statements or their, that placement to access the front and back of the property. And they hope to, of actual marketing and already adding three million dollars because Goodwill's gonna be there for nothing years.
How many square feet is that? How many square feet?
I hate to be what to say this, but it's in your package. I think it's in, I think it's eighteen thousand, four feet for the building, you said?
That's pretty high price, pretty high, pretty big.
Yeah, it's that, uh, they, they'll push an act money for tenants that's in place.
Collins, Ms. Knight.
No comment.
Ms. Trent.
No comment.
Mr. Quark.
No comments.
Ms. Dean.
No comment.
Go ahead.
Hey, he's selfish. Do you want me to stick around for the votes?
I think you're probably gonna be good on that.
Thanks, I think you could handle it too. Thanks so much.
Second reading of the fire case, slight changes, I recommend this good second read. Any comments for the fire department that related to the fire case? Ms. Knight.
Hi, no, no question.
Ms. Trent.
Uh, no question or compliments, Miss Dan. And thank you for our department to repair the package to where they put the notes, pointed out early to the council. Wanting a chance and the reason why, that make the communication easier. I appreciate that.
Mr. Quark.
No comment.
Ms. Dean.
No comment.
Good to go, Chief. Mr. Warren, give us an update on the conference, never.
Miss on your faces, they're doing, they seen you in a while. So I won't be for you too long tonight, but I do have a couple of things to talk about. Uh, as you guys know, we've had a couple of rough months. Uh, COVID is always gonna be a factor comes to happen events. Uh, but the good news is that almost, except for one client on our books, everybody is back to in-person meetings, which means the Georgia D cows, the morning meetings, things like that, all that will pick back up. Um, our March forecast looking at twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. April already looks at thirty, looks like thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand fourteen cents. And May is already at seventeen thousand, uh, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, we have some big wins. Kaiser Permanente is back, which means that they're gonna use this all over, for anything on the South Side, over a hundred people. They're gonna be using the Marl Center. So that was a deal that we worked out, so of course it's gonna be, you know, it's a couple thousand there. Uh, Georgia Cyber, which is our largest client, it was in over twenty-five thousand. They added another five thousand dollars in dates for the winter. And that's gonna be, uh, over thirty thousand dollar client for the year. The Atlanta Met Gala, you guys are familiar with the New York Met Gala, so there's gonna be one in Atlanta now. There is already one. And that right there is gonna be on July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, it's hosted by Johnny Wilson and the very, the world high class of Atlanta. And it's gonna be themed Arabian Nights, live in color. Tickets are on sale now, so Marl Center is already out there on the Atlanta. As you see right now, the National Trichology Institute, one of five in the U.S., are having their regional conference here on May fifteenth and sixteenth. Beauty Master has done, is doing their customer appreciation, I mean, excuse me, client, no, employee appreciation night on June twelfth. And I'll speak in negotiations for Kings of the South tomorrow at two o'clock for their event. Any questions?
Questions, Ms. Knight.
No questions, Karen.
Ms. Trent.
No questions.
Mr. Quark.
No question.
Ms. Dean.
No question, but I do have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
You're coming?
Um, I'm still hearing buzz about the.
About.
Evolution.
Evolution, yes, yes, yes. It was great. It was a team effort, everyone was here, I mean, you guys, you guys showed up and showed out, it was, it was incredible. We're getting questions about how much is the building? You know, you know, questions that we never get at, you know, a Marl Center, uh, you know, a city event like that. So it's just, it's, it was unreal and I'm so proud of all of you for allowing us to really pull that off. So I thank you.
Can you give us an update on the, uh, the, the event there in Montesal circus?
Yes, April twenty-seventh is, uh, Marl Night Under the Big Top, Universal Circus for the first time ever. Uh, Mr. John Merrill Apple will be guest ringmaster, so if you wanna see him in the circus team, April twenty-seventh, seven o'clock, don't miss it. So yeah, tickets on sale now, Rochelle and Kried have been, uh, amazing, I'm under confirmation, so it's all here for fun. If anybody needs a ticket, do let me know.
Is it inside or outside?
Inside, inside, the air conditioning.
But it's the gray lot in Atlanta?
Yes, the, yes, absolutely.
And I think the ticket price is about half of what, that will be, of course, we'll get you.
We'll do some, some training on the style, guys.
All right, thanks, sir. Got a discussion about the use of the community room, uh, community space. And it's a combination of candidates, they'll call it political organizations, you know, but it could be other organizations. You know, and this just gets apart, right now you've got a series of rules and regulations. And it's like, you know, we're, we're happy to accept your money, you know, but in some cases, you know, we really don't want your money. We've got to know that it's a community, that's what it's designed for. Uh, we may not all agree with the particular opinion of a particular candidate or even a particular organization. But years ago, the Democratic Party used it, the Republican Party used it, the Libertarian Party used it. And all they had to do was give us a deposit, make sure they kept it going down was the point. Uh, there's also some other organizations, um, you could have, um, you know, maybe, and I'm just paraphrasing, I don't have these organizations like lineup. Let's just say you had a women's organization, you know, right now you have to pay. And you're going, wow, you know, we own the building, we're trying to get, you know, our citizens in all. You know, there's probably four or five organizations that certainly would approve of. But for the most part, what we've done in the past is we now charge. And we don't really have a method to not charge. So the idea is to create some discussion and to take that back to what it used to be as a community. Now, if you're gonna do it for your birthday party or something like that, we're still gonna charge a small fee. And we're still gonna ask you to clean it, if you don't clean it, we don't charge your credit card. Or we're just gonna restrict it so that you're not gonna be able to use it in the future however you want to do that. But somewhere in the past, you know, this council, you know, decided to charge, not this council, but a council decided to charge you for those fees. And I want to have a, you know, a, a discussion as we're going into political season, um, as well as we've had some requests for some, you know, neighborhood organizations, if you will. You know, if there's no reason that you shouldn't be able to use it, and there's certainly no reason that we should charge you four hundred dollars, uh, for the permit. So that being said, and that's the basis of it, and this starts the conversation, there, there's a series of things that are, um, confidence. Ms. Knight.
So if this is a, if this is a new direction, uh, you know, our pivot, uh, I think we need to be clear on what the parameters are. Um, especially with the ca- uh, calendar as well. So if you're a community organization and you want to come in and, you know, have, have your monthly membership meeting, uh, and you wanna book out a year in advance. Um, I think we need to have some thought and some parameters around that because that really would be fair. Um, also, when we say community organizations, do we mean those based in Marl? Those coming from Forest Park to use the community room, those coming from Jones Run to use the community room? So let's be intentional in the parameters that we're setting so that at the end of the day, if you're gonna offer something up, quarter nominal deposit, free to an organization, city residents come, they wanna use the room, they are ending up being charged or treated differently as a citizen, um, you know, taxpaying citizen who should have the benefit of our beautifully renovated, um, community space. Let's, let's, um, put some ideas and some parameters together. We need to adjust the fee schedule. Let's think it through so that the space can be managed in a way where, um, keeping the clear as well.
Ms. Trent.
I agree with, uh, Council, right? And another thing to consider is that if we're leaning forward to, if we allow certain organizations, um, to use with no charge, meanwhile, the citizen, we would take charge, but we would fit that two different treatment. And that can appear like we are using our elected official authority to support other political, it's might, it's in a wrong run, it might be accidentally support the political candidate. And for our, for the Title Forty-five, the ethical for elected official, we are not supposed to do that. Um, and this, uh, raised, raised the question for the city attorney, uh, duty and energy interim. Could you get the city attorney to get, to give us the legal advice?
She's correctly reviewed. She is correctly reviewed.
Thank you.
Mr. Quark.
Yeah, I agree with all of that, um, and I, I think that we should, um, it should be topic free, it should be a smaller amount of charge, just two charges, so people would book it responsibly, you know, I just like, it is free, so we're, we're just lining up and get people book the, uh, facility for no reason, you know, I think, you know, keep people booking it, um, to be responsible, you know, so we can charge it to the minimum charge, you know, whatever we can come up with. Not to keep people, to keep it open for everybody.
Ms. Dean.
Uh, those points that I also agree with. There, there probably needs to be some exceptions if we invite tax preparer to come in and do taxes for free. Or if we have, um, you know, situations like that where it's a community service, I think those people should be charged. Anything to come in and provide, uh, a free service, you know, periodically, not, it should be a standing, item, uh, year round. But, um, there again, um, I've been here when it was open and then when it, the reason for it, uh, being discontinued, uh, and, and that, and that's a, that's a slippery slope. Uh, we need to carefully, um, make sure that we have, um, usage covered and, um, so that there are no issues, um, that we can foresee in, uh, future problems. Um, if it, if it, if, you know, something might occur. So we need to, um, I think, uh, citizens, they're paying for it, they should use it for free. It's the community room, and they are community, so I don't think we should charge our citizens, um, a fee to use a community room, not here.
Mr. Warren.
Eric, I did, uh, a question actually, would it be, would it be possible to create a situation where there are different fee structures? And I ask that because I turned down a lot of, a lot of parties, as he knows, I call her quite often now, uh, about, you know, the availability of the community room because the Marl Center really can't handle a thirty person party without losing money doing the event because it costs over a hundred dollars a day just to run the place, you know what I mean? But if you could do something, and I understand, you know, as you just mentioned, you explained to me about the fire department and noise levels while they're sleeping, so music doesn't work there at night. But there are a lot of events where there's, you know, baby showers that end at five o'clock, six o'clock in the evening. Um, and of course, we're not gonna give the, you know, a client from, you know, the, from Gwinnett for, do a baby shower for free here, so is it possible, and then not to mention also, because that community room, just knowing the world of events and spaces in this metro area for the last four years now, that place can get pretty, pretty pricey if you wanted to, if you wanted to get prices off. So I'm saying there's ability to have different fee schedules and different prices for different people. I'm asking, would that be considered in, during your consideration?
Right now we're taking good notes.
Got you, got you, got you.
And, and tell him one of, well, Mr. Collins, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I ask that you take in consideration, uh, when you're establishing these policies or processes of pricing, whatever you're gonna call it. Because there are a lot of nonprofit organizations out there. And I have one in particular. I'm the new elect commander of BMW Post fifty-eight. And we have to give up our building and, uh, in Lake City. And I wanna move them to Marl. I wanna move them in our city. And I've had a conversation, uh, uh, directed to the mayor about me moving this, this organization to Marl. Veteran Foreign Wars is a non-profitive organization. And I can't think of a better city to move them to. Uh, but, uh, because we're nonprofit, we basically have no money. So, you know, our money goes basic to the children's home in Kansas City and, and to help other veterans, you know, obtain their veteran benefits. So I ask that you keep that in consideration. However, I'm gonna move that organization to Marl one way or another. If I have to rent out a councilwoman night's house. Come on, man. No, no, we just, we, we only meet month, we meet on the third, uh, Thursday of each month. Uh, for about two hours, you know, and again, you know, a lot of the veterans that are members of the organization live where? In Marl. And a lot of them are, are live in Lake City. And, uh, I don't want to, uh, move the organization outside of our community. And I don't wanna bring them here, so I ask that you respect and take that into consideration, especially when you're dealing with nonprofit organizations. Not for benefit.
Yes, sir.
So I did wanna, um, comment, um, perfect segue to tie the two together. Um, Mr. Thompson's comment, Mr. Collins. Uh, a tiered structure could possibly be an option. Um, understanding that you don't wanna be in a situation where you're providing a, a free, a free room to what might seem to be, uh, a benign or nonprofit organization. And we're not charging a fee, but they're charging others a fee for whatever service that, uh, you, all of a sudden you've got, you know, a pop-up shop, so to speak, where they're making money off of the good intentions of city, of the city, uh, to make sure that that facility is usable by residents. So maybe a tiered structure would be, would benefit so that we understand if you're a true nonprofit and the nature of what you're going to do in that room doesn't involve, you know, generating an income, that's, that's one thing. Versus, you know, I live in the city and I have books I wanna sell and I have a pop-up shop and, you know, buy everything colorful and it's wonderful. So we do need to think about maybe a tiered structure so that we're, um, sending the right message to citizens while encouraging a larger community to come to the city hall campus and use the facilities, but under the, um, under the right cost and purpose.
Other questions?
Oh, and we, um, Oh, and we, we are very actively envisioning our Arts and Recreation Building off of Reynolds Road. So there are opportunities to serve the community that we're trying to work out as a city currently. So I think it's an exciting proposition. Over there off of Reynolds Road, we have the Community Garden, the Dog Park, the, the trail system that connects. And a new, a new benefit to city residents is going to be our Arts and Recreation Area. So that, that may solve a lot of, may solve a lot of needs for organizations like that as well.
If you haven't seen that middle building, you really have to take a little bit of a tour. We're working on some, right, I just, I'm sorry, some consensus type of items. In other words, we're beginning to move it forward. You got four big buildings over there. The main building is probably going to be a little bit more complex. That's going to take a little time. The front building over to the left, a little bit functionally obsolete. We're trying to find the studs in the walls and things like that. There are both the gymnasium, which has some other private opportunities that go with it, as well as the main building. The main building's got a lower floor to it, it's almost the size of the community room now. And the upper floor, you know, has an area that's got a little small stage to it, certainly a reading room, and three, three small rooms on the side. That one's more maybe it's going to have to see, you know, change the air conditioning. I started with, and then to play. I would just say, you know, especially Mr. Collins, you know, short term, you know, certainly, you say it all makes all the sense in the world. But I would anticipate by this time next year, if we have a home, that would be something to be proud of. That's part of, I don't think everybody can speak to. So we're just taking some common statements and that, just trying to come up with some parameters that make sense. You know, obviously ask, you know, the legal questions, ask, you know, what do you need? Just be careful. Sometimes you ask for a legal opinion and then actually, you know, somebody else will be offered a liability coverage to behave the bar, the community, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So comments, comments, well stated.
Good evening. I'm going to talk fast because I know we've got a defense. So I want to give a quick update on our quarter one events. And we have our quarter two events. So if you remember, we had our Lunar New Year, our St. Patrick's Day festival. Thank you so much, everyone that came out last Thursday. The weather was absolutely picture perfect. And we had a tremendous afternoon, as well as evolution that Warren talked about a little bit ago. If you have not seen all the photos, please make sure that you visit our website. Photos are on the site. There's a gallery there now, as well as on our Facebook page. So our quarter two events, we've got our Marrow Bird Walk. And apparently, we are, we've identified ninety-nine birds, right? And we need to identify one more.
Well, we need to join.
The Audubon Society. And there's one more bird that we have yet to find. We have a bird walk that's coming up every second Wednesday at eight AM at Reynolds Nature Preserve. Bring your monoculars, wear comfortable shoes. Thank you, Councilwoman Dean, for pulling all of this together and getting this into play. It is free and open to the community. Then next, if you remember, we have our Food Truck Fun Days. They'll be starting again on April the twenty-first at the Laker Park there, at the LCI Park, Laker Park, our food truck plaza over at Clayton State. Every first and third, Thursday of the month, it will start on the twenty-first and we will run through September. And the last one in September will actually be, the date will change. It will be outlined down on Wednesday instead. So stay tuned for more details about that. And as Warren talked about a minute ago, we have partnered with Universal Soul Circus. We have a City of Marrow Night on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh at seven PM. Tickets start at twenty-two dollars. You do get a special discount if you use the code MARROW22. Please register now. Tickets will go quickly. And share, please, thank you, and share. And again, we do not want to miss our mayor as a guest ringmaster. Next is our Cinco de Mayo event on Sunday, May the first at the District or Old Town Marrow. Food and music aplenty. I clipped too soon. And then on May fourteenth, from ten to three, we're doing the Keys to the City Car Show again. We did this last year, if you remember. We are looking forward to partnering with them again. They do an absolutely exceptional job. And from an event partnership standpoint, they have been an absolute dream to work with. Our partners do like them. So we're super excited for the event coming up on the fourteenth. We also, we do not have collateral on this, on these next events yet. This will be coming. We are doing a community yard sale, again, thank you, Councilwoman Dean, on Saturday, May twenty-first, from nine to one at the District. Sign up details to register as a vendor, register your table, have your stuff out. That would be coming very, very soon. Next, we have a lot going on in quarter two, y'all. Next is the National Car Show, Saturday, June the fourth, also at the District. And using this as a partnership or kind of as people make their way down to the raceway down in Hampton. We have not set the exact time yet. That will be coming very soon. And then I think, no, two more, our Pathway ribbon cutting. So if you know and remember, we've talked a lot about our pathway system that connects the entire city of Marrow. We are doing an official ribbon cutting dedication for the pathway. We have not set a date and time yet. We've got three dates identified, but there are a couple of moving pieces that we need to shore up on the back end before we can select a date. And then finally, for quarter two is our Juneteenth event. This is an annual signature event. Last year was the first year that we did it. It will be Saturday, June the eleventh at Bob and Becky Huey Park from one until nine AM.
And for those who don't know, that Juneteenth is also produced by the producer of Universal.
Of the Universal Circus.
And also there's an evolution video coming. I feel like there's an evolution video coming. I just had to cut out that today. So we're going to have to get a very tight, so, because the Marrow Center was transformed in a way that really wasn't seen before, so we're going to really pump that.
Questions?
Questions, Ms. Knight.
Thank you.
Ms. Warren.
No questions.
Mr. Warren.
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Dee.
Comments? The mayor is wearing quite a few costumes lately.
It's many costumes on this one. I've got photographic proof from St. Patrick's Day.
And was that Halloween, he was Superman? At St. Patrick's, he was the little leper, the big leper.
The very big leper.
And last week, we were doing the circus.
The ringmaster.
Exactly, now the ringmaster.
We'll forward to that.
I got a feeling I'm being sent out there somewhere.
Yeah, you definitely are.
Well, we will give yourself a cup of coffee and we will continue for the regular council meeting in about three minutes.